Hi, everyone.
Good afternoon. Matt, before we get started, we got to see the little baby.
I don't think you should call Matthew a little baby.
I know, I want to see his little baby. Let's see his son. Oh, he can't hear anything. Okay.
He can. Bringing him over, he's looking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Whoever said that.
That, that was me, Matt.
We moved the. About the school was moved up to the front, but it looks like.
Your screen says that you're muted, but that's interesting. Your mic is better. Okay, two mics, okay.
Yes, yes.
And confirm that. Oh, here it is.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yes. Tom, did you have a nice drive today? Can folks hear us?
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you.
Just making sure, Tommy.
See part of you.
All right, Pete, I didn't realize you were talking to me.
How your drive was today?
It was, it was good, good. Yeah.
We certainly missed having the puppy around.
Therapy dog wasn't dead today. It was a bad day in the office.
Yeah.
You're echoey, Diana. You're getting kind of an echo. Sounds like you're talking out of a tin can.
You're hard to hear clearly.
More than one mic on. Must be the tin can you're living in.
I'm glad that boots was missed. I know I wasn't, but I, I thought boots would be.
I picked up on that. We weren't going to say it out loud.
All right, four thirty-two. Yes, it is a little past four thirty. Glad to see all those joining here. I will call this regular town council meeting to order if I can get a roll call, please. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Sorry, that was me, I'm here.
It's very hard to hear you. Here.
I'm here.
Here.
Thank you, Diana. For this pledge of allegiance, I would really like to do this in honor of the Ukrainians who are currently right now fighting for their freedom. A lot of innocent people are losing their lives completely unnecessarily and I think in honor of them, we should reflect on our own freedoms and our families, our community, the people that we care about, and how grateful we are as a nation to have the freedoms that we do and, and one another, and especially this town. So I would just like to do honor of them. If you'll all join me, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Thank you. And with that, there have been a couple adjustments to the agenda. We're doing order twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two out of order with some backup additions and also a revised order number thirty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Are there any other updates? No, I don't believe so. With that, seeking approval, the minutes of February tenth, twenty-twenty-two, regular meeting and February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two executive session.
Tom Woo, second.
Motion by Councilor Mador, second by Councilor Pelletier. All those in favor, Councilor Prey.
Aye.
Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor McEwen.
Aye.
Chair Goldie, aye, Councilor Mador.
Aye.
Councilor Bragdon.
Aye.
Councilor Pelletier.
Aye.
Prove seven zero. Seeing that we have no special presentations, we'll go to the town manager's report.
Thank you. This report, of course, was submitted ahead of time. I hope everybody had an opportunity to read through it. I will offer some highlights and certainly be open to, to any questions. I wanted to touch first on the Katon Snowdown and Winterfest that, that took place this past weekend. It was the, the second annual snowdown and that event was a huge success. Well, we had a great turnout at the rep complex. It was, it was really great to see that many families and, and kids over there having a great time and a great day. And, you know, a huge thank you to all of those who came forward to, to volunteer and participate in the execution of that event. You know, we, we, we rely heavily on volunteers to pull those community events off, so we are very greatly appreciative of the, the volunteers, both internal, you know, with, with people involved with the municipality and, and then community members as well. It's, it's not possible to do that stuff without them. So, big thank you. As we all know, the Winterfest Antique Snowmobile Parade was canceled. I wanted to offer some further clarification on why that was canceled. And I, I wanted to emphasize that it was canceled due to weather, not due to COVID. It's a very important separation I wanted to make clear. There were, we were looking at temperatures of fifty degrees with a, with a night of rain. That decision is made in partnership between a few department heads here within the town staff, as well as representation from Northern Timber Cruisers. And I wanted to bring some light on some of the mechanics behind that snowmobile parade that, you know, the, the, the Public Works Crew, the director and, and a number of the, the crew themselves. They come together at two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning as volunteers. And they transport dump trucks full of snow to the downtown corridor and they lay it, of course, in the parallel parking lane along Penobscot Avenue. After a night of rain and, you know, looking at fifty-degree temperatures for most of that day, we would have been looking at an an absolute mess on Main Street of melted snow and water and then, you know, frozen over with ice later that day. So, you know, that on top of the, you know, valuable antique sleds that, you know, the owners would not have wanted to ride on the tar like that and, and, you know, damage their valuable possessions. You know, I, I fully supported the decision that was made by department heads and the Timber Cruisers to cancel that. But it's not completely dead in the water. There, there may be an opportunity to revisit that in the near future. And conversations are at play for that, so more to, more to come. On top of that, that weekend, the Finn and Feather Club had, had a, had a great turnout for their annual Kids Day at Jerry Pond. It's a, a great use of that community asset we have. Jerry Pond is an incredible asset here in the, in the community that, you know, it would be great to see even celebrated and used more for community events like this moving forward. But I wanted to congratulate them on a great turnout. I had heard that those that participated had a great day. Has an update from conversation in our last meeting. There was discussion about code enforcement ordinance related issues and the law enforcement's approach to that. Did have a conversation with Chief McDonough from the East Millenock Police Department. We came to a very cordial agreement where when we looked at the oaths and, and how they were worded. You know, it, it very clearly stated that it, you know, they would uphold the local ordinances and state laws. So, we are going to continue having a first approach as code enforcement officer, and if the problem continues, there will be communication from the police department who will, you know, issue whatever appropriate ticket is, is fitting. If the problem, you know, persists, so. We were able to come to an agreement there and, and I, you know, was very pleased with that conversation with Chief McDonough and I appreciated his willingness to adapt easily and, and quickly in that situation. I wanted to give an update on valuation question that was posed at the last meeting. Been made a conversation with our assessor, Lorna, on this. To do a traditional, a traditional assessment, we'd be looking at north of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it would be two to three years out. We are looking at two options to do that revaluation internally that could be done under our assessors licensing with some part-time project-specific help. And, and we have a couple of options there. We're trying to nail down some final details to bring recommendations for. But they would be far less costly and be able to be done much timelier. You know, we'd be, we'd be able to hit the ground running at any moment on a project like that. So far as, so much as the, the, the funding is allocated for it and the, the feedback I would look at getting from, from the council would be, you know, whether or not the internal process was supported. And then, you know, the, the, the two, the, the options include having, having it done by street view only. You know, in, in comparison to what is on record for those properties. The other opportunity would be to have a street view and an internal assessment of, of the, of the property done as well, the inside of the building. And, you know, each of them would would affect the, the total valuation differently, as you can imagine. So we would look for some guidance on, you know, which one to, to to shoot for on that. We have jumped into budget process. We were in the very beginning stages. Each department has received, has received the budget worksheets for their departments. Big thanks to our treasurer, Mr. Marialice, for putting those together and preparing our department heads for, for jumping into that. One of the, the, the biggest hot topic in the, in the municipal world right now is the cost of living increase. We're seeing some drastically different percentages throughout the state. So we are kind of doing some, some more in-depth analysis of how Millenock might be able to best a, address that and how we can handle that situation locally and respectively for, for the cost of living increase for our employees. I wanted to give a, a brief reminder, and I plan to continue to do this. The best way to reach us, specifically me here on behalf of the town of Millenock. And this is a message to all community members. That is to call me here at the office, seven two three seven thousand, or to email me here at the office, manager at millenock.org. Public participation is encouraged in all of our council meetings and all of our committee meetings. But the best, the, the best way to reach us is the traditional methods, phone, email, stop by. I've got, you know, my door open most of the time here. Share your concerns. The Facebook comments and feeds are not guaranteed to be seen. They're not guaranteed to be responded to. The best way to see any sort of action there is to contact me directly and I'm happy to explain or work with you further to to help you understand any of, any of the things that we're looking at. So please understand that we are encourage all engagement and participation from the community. We would love to have you join our meetings and, and, and participate in our committees and our conversations and definitely to volunteer for those great ideas that you have. Because our volunteer numbers are down and our ideas are up. So moving forward, I had a few highlights within the departments I wanted to go over. Number one would be our current situation at the airport. We do, we're going on two weeks without, without access to water there due to frozen pipes that are laid deep in the ground. And, you know, the, the drastically changing temperatures has forced the, the, the frost conditions further into the earth and has trapped and frozen some of the, the pipes that lead into the, the facility there. So we have been looking at that in great detail. We have the opportunity to claim that on our insurance policy and have it fixed. We are looking for some a few pieces of further information in order to do that, whether or not, you know, how far we can dig from the building. There is an order later in the agenda this evening that can, that we can talk about that more in depth. If you'd like, we can have Jeff certainly speak to that as well. As I see he's, he's on this evening. Coming from the treasurer's office. Sewer lanes were filed this week for unpaid sewer bills from November of twenty twenty to February of twenty twenty-one. That is approximately seventy accounts. The total accounts, the total uncollected fees for those accounts are approximately nineteen thousand six hundred dollars. That is, that is the situation we would like to see rectified. Certainly. Out of the town clerk and taxes collector's office. Wanted to mention that we did, we did receive a fair number of, of payments towards property taxes for the unpaid balances. We had received, I believe, Diana, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had received right around sixty thousand dollars, dropping us to an un an amount of four hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars sixty-three cents remaining unpaid for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then there is a lingering twenty thousand dollars from the prior round of payments for twenty-one, twenty-two. So we are looking better than we were two weeks ago, but we would certainly encourage those payments to continue coming in so that we can continue providing the great service that we do as a municipality. Tom and the fire ambulance and public safety office is business as usual and doing great with, with many good things coming along. And the police report is attached, so feel free to look into that more detailed. With that, I will hand things back to the council. Take any questions I can answer to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And if you all see at the end of that packet, there's also the chair report. I had a few items I wanted to bring up to the council as well. First of which is, and, and by the way, I see both Josh is on here to speak to the school discussion. We'll get to that order right after this. I, I'm looking at the updated order about a rotation and we'll get to you next after this manager's report. For the electricity, electricity and distribution costs, I mean, I've heard endless accounts from community members, not only in town, but regionally and statewide at the ever-increasing costs that we're seeing in our electricity bills. Obviously, that's hitting people very hard, especially as we're seeing, you know, gasoline and diesel prices go through the roof as well. A few years back, I had brought up, which I know has been brought up before I came along as well, the thought of forming our own electric utility as a tri-town or as a region or even joining an existing one like Eastern Maine Electric Co-op. And the reason for that is not only would we have our own local control over our energy supply and the cost, but we would also be able to put all the profits that would ordinarily go into a foreign investor, which is currently versant as a foreign-owned company. That's also investor-owned and put it back to the community or, or back into reinvesting into the utility and keep costs low. If you look at all the other, the majority of the other municipalities or co-ops throughout the state, such as Holton and others who have their own utility, they have the lowest cost in the state. And on top of that, they, they had not raised their rates anywhere near or if at all what Versant and Ameri has, or Versant and CMP has. I brought up this idea unofficially, both the East Millenock at Medway to make them aware and kind of get their feedback as well. I attended East Millenock's board meeting earlier this week and they were very enthusiastically on board with something like this. And I also plan to hear back from Medway shortly as well. I wanted to get some council thoughts on the many directions that this could go. Obviously, this would be a multi-year process. There's a lot of barriers in place doing something like this, a lot of costs potentially, a lot of factors. So I wanted to at least bring that idea out and see if the council was interested at least in pursuing this idea. The next, the next part of the chair report is on FERC relicensing and its impacts. Basically, there have been, as many of you know, the relicensing conversation has been here. There are groups that are interested in putting a ladder in at the Brookfield dams, which could potentially have a terrible impact on our native brook trout, which is one of a kind, really. It would affect a lot of anglers and a lot of the recreation tourism base that we see here. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, something to keep our, our minds on. Currently, they're looking at what kind of studies to be done on that. So there isn't anything that we really could take a position on right now, but I wanted to at least make that known. That is a potential issue as we move forward and something we should keep up on. The third point here is snowmobiling and downtown access, and I would add ATV into that as well. Large growing number of members of the community and, and business owners have expressed their concerns at the lack of noticeable or safe trails that go through town, let alone to the downtown, to be able to serve the businesses down there. Currently, through a huge portion of the week, the only restaurant that's open for snowmobilers with an existing trail is McDonald's. There are a lot of other businesses that have not remained open in part because of this issue. So the manager and I will be meeting with Mr. Raymond on this and others to hopefully come up with some ideas and plans and how new routes could be made or other ways to address this issue. And we'll also continue that discussion in the Economic Development Committee. And lastly, another growing concern in the community has been meeting times being inconvenient to the public. Which also kind of just brings up other points in general, which is what kind of, what kind of meeting and, and, and the inviting nature of, of the council. I know that the town has definitely gone through hard times, many times, gone through many different councils, many different managers. I personally am extremely pleased and excited to be working with the council that we That we have now, we have an excellent manager, we have fantastic staff. And I feel that it really is our responsibility to. Make known to the public how well we really are all working together and how inviting we are to their concerns. And making a more inviting community environment for them. I've, I've been seeing this come up quite frequently and thought it was worth addressing. I wanted to bring up the idea of having a meeting that perhaps would start at five or five thirty. And beforehand, having a pre-meeting of source, of sorts, where it'd be kind of an informal gathering. Where community members can interact with one another with counselors that may be there earlier. Even offering some kind of refreshments or something like that as well. To make it more of a community event. I would be more than happy to supply the refreshments or whatever else as we get started to see how that works. But I wanted to at least propose that. On that note though, I do want to speak to some of the advancements that we have made as a council, which I think are really important. We've created the citizens guide to council meetings, which is the beginning of our packet. It's on every single packet. That allows members of the public who may be. Weary or concerned about going up to the council by not knowing our procedures or processes. It lays all those things out, the terminology and things like that. That's something that we added last year. We've changed our two-minute public comment where members of the public can ask questions after a member of the public had. Raised an issue with that. We've been posting YouTube videos online of all of our committee and council meetings to make them more accessible. All of our emails and phone numbers are published online, which they have been for some time. We also post announcements on Facebook and on the website fairly frequently. And lastly, also from citizen feedback. We've included on every one of our warrants, the list of all of the companies and the amounts that we pay for. So everything in my, in my view. You know, that we've done has been geared towards making a much more transparent, inviting and. Good working. Council. So with that, and lastly, of course, a round of. A straw poll to see how the council feels about meeting in person versus Zoom since we're. We're speaking to that every meeting. And with that, I'll go to the counselors. If any counselors have comment, I see Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, thank you very much. First off, thank you, the manager for another. Comprehensive report and. Easy to read. I want to congratulate, congratulations to. Our counselor Danforth for the leadership she provides for the snowdown. Kudos to the Finn and Feather for the kids' ice fishing day. And. Like to thank the manager for getting quick clarification on our police. Issue with the ordinances that seems to have worked out rather nicely. Regarding the valuation. Thank you for really addressing it right off and. My thoughts would be to. Get more detailed info on the in-house. Revaluation system and possibly just do an external, exterior. Valuation as I think. As it was noted earlier, the. Inflation and, and property values and stuff that's going on, we need to address it sooner rather than later. It would be a quicker process and. We could always attack the interior valuation part of that process, like say over. Two to three years, you know, and, and make that more budget friendly. I was curious on the. Transfer station report, MRC. If there's any, any new information regarding their startup. And on the tax collectors' report. Town clerk rather. Regarding the wastewater bills changing their format. I noticed that the postage rate seemed to be at first class. I was wondering why there wasn't a bulk rate for that, that amount of mailing. Charge, which would make that a little less expensive and I certainly agree with changing that process. And finally, down to the sheriff's report. I agree with the exploration of infusibility of a, a different electrical distribution system for us. The FERC relicensing, I agree with that. We should. Explore what the impact of these. Changes, you know, fish ladders would be to our local fishery. But. I'm telling you, you know, without a lot more looking into it. And time and nature of the council meetings. Sounds like a, a good plan. Anything that makes it a lot friendlier and inviting, I'm certainly for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier. Counselor Bragdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To start off, I'm also looking for a straw poll to kind of piggyback off what you said. On making the council meetings more inviting, the events committee met and I had brought up the idea of doing a potluck. Before. Before a meeting where the community could do exactly what you said, you know, communicate with us, communicate with other members to make it a more welcoming environment. And I'm looking to see if the council decides to go back in person, which I think we should. If you guys would be okay with me organizing a potluck with the manager. And everyone would bring something, whether Steve, you bring refreshments and you know, I bring dessert or you know, X, Y, Z. And community members are also welcome to bring food, but I'm looking for a straw poll to see how the council feels about that because I'd love to do it for our first meeting back. Second, the reevaluation, I think doing it internally, if we can save some money there and maybe even save some time, I'm definitely for that. And I think that's a great idea. So thank you for, for bringing that forward. Thank you to the Finn and Feather Club and for everybody who helped with the snowdown. That was awesome. I got to stop down for a little bit and. Seeing the amount of kids that were down there and the amount of parents that were down there were, was very, that, that made me very happy. It's nice to see things are happening again. As for meeting times, I think pushing it back an hour to five thirty would be easier on everybody. Including myself. I've heard a lot of people say that they have a hard time getting out of work, you know, and making it to the council meetings on time. And we do have some people that flow in rather later. To our council meetings. So maybe pushing it back an hour would, would be beneficial for everybody. And then that hour beforehand, four thirty to five thirty, we could do. Potlucks, you know, maybe some events before, you know, council meetings to make it more opening. The versant. Issue you had brought up in your chair report, I definitely would like to know if they're willing to sell their infrastructure. I'm assuming the answer is no, but can't, can't hurt to ask. So I am definitely for moving forward with that idea and finding out exactly what, what's. What's moving forward with that. FERC, I really haven't heard anything about that, but I'd love to know more. I'm really big on fishing and if it hurts fishing, I'm, I'm definitely not. I, I don't want to do anything that will hurt the area of fishing wise. East PD, you know, I preached pretty heavily the last couple of meetings about. You know, the ordinances and everything that was going on and I'm glad to see and thank you, Mr. Jamison for, for doing that. I know I bothered you quite a bit about that, but. I, I really appreciate the quick response to me about what they said, and I'm glad that it was a very civil discussion and that they came back with a relatively good answer. Sandra Sullivan, you know, her comment that she made, it, it did not make sense otherwise. And I definitely agree that the direction that you took and that. East PD took was a great resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bragdon and Counselor Pelletier. I didn't get a clear. Decision on if you would rather be in person or Zoom.
Yeah, I'm all for Zoom. I'm totally protected. Good luck with the rest of yous.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier. Counselor Pry.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. In reference to a meeting in person, I'm going to again yield to. Tom Malcolm and let him make the call on that. I'm fully vaccinated. I was fully vaccinated and I got COVID mildly. Didn't really affect me. I've got the booster and all that. It's a question I still think that I'll. I know nothing about it. I'll trust Tom and, and the sources that he goes to to make those recommendations. I also would like the person-to-person. Meetings. I would prefer them, but I'm going to yield to those recommendations. In reference to the, to the manager's report first. Again, as all the other counselors, a big thank you to all of those that have worked the Katahdin snowdown, the efforts that were put in. I appreciate even though we had the canceled the parade and stuff, the work that the Timber Cruiser and Finn and Feather up to Jerry Pawn, all of the efforts that they have done over the years. Promoting those efforts. Thank you for, to Peter for going down and talking with the chief down to east and talking about. Making these changes and addressing the problem. I guess that puts it back into our court to, to deal with. As to reevaluation, this is what we've been talking about for, for some time, for about a year. The two options of hiring somebody or doing it ourselves. I think the majority feeling it before has always been that we try to do it internally. I am not in favor of doing inside the house evaluation at this stage. I do agree that we can go back and look at it as Counselor Pelletier had recommended, can make some type of assessment. Minimum assessment or something on that, just so that everybody's treated somewhat fairly and then fine tune it thereafter. I'm sure that other communities have gone through this before, so there's probably already a model out there that we can look at. I appreciate the town manager again on the canceling of the parade, the Winterfest parade. And the process that to, to get ahold of him instead of going to social media and assuming a lot of activities. Call up and get the, get the answer directly from. Somewhat of the source. It wasn't a talent issue, but at least he knows what those types of activities that are going on. It's mentioned there and we're going to talk about this, I think, later, but the talk from Public Works, the. Discussion about fuel costs. There's another question to that is where are we on consumption in this part of the budget? Obviously, the, the raise in the price, the rise in the price of per gallon has had a significant increase. And it has affected the budget, but I don't know if we've used more to date. Doesn't seem as if we've been plowing as much snow. We haven't, we've had a few big storms, but it doesn't seem like we've had a whole lot of storms to me. So I don't know if we've consumed more or where we are in that budget. Do we have enough money for the rest of the year in the budget because of that? I'd like a little bit more balance on that by the time we meet again or get talking further and, and in depth about it. Like Counselor Bragdon, the question or, and I think Counselor Pelletier both raised on the MRC meeting. It went well. What does that mean? It's still not open. What I've read in the paper and online is that MRC is looking at trying to buy the facility, trying to buy out the bond, the investors. In that, I don't know what impact that has. I have raised this before. I think we should invite MRC to come up. When Counselor Mador had raised some concerns about the difference between MRC and FERC, we should have them come back up and give us a briefing on that. And I, I appreciate the, the guard system. Giving us the activity of, of use of the guard or kicking off the guard system recording. Can we get a, an impact of kind of a year-to-year impact of what type of use we're having? I understand winter is a much slower time, but it's the number of aircraft coming in and actually landing, taking off and using the facility, I think, is more important to us. Than those who just hit the, the guard system and, and gives us a beep. Appreciate the off, the work that the town treasurer and. Tax collector and others have been doing on getting people to pay up their back taxes, working on it. It's a lot lower number than it was a few years ago, and I think that's because of the, the office staff putting a lot of time into doing those types of activities. Compliments to them. In reference to the police report, I, I appreciate all the work that they're doing in the efforts that they give. I, I think they've got a good crew on. I did think we were already up to full number of officers, but now we're down one, I believe. And. Before I'd kind of heard that there was a lot of pressure because Millnocket was consuming so much of the time of East Millnocket. And I don't know what the East Millnocket Medway budget for law enforcement is, but I noticed, for example, they note that there's a hundred and seventy-five calls. From February seventh to February, yeah, from the seventh to the twentieth for service in Millnocket. And of course, they mentioned that there was three hundred and ninety-one overall. Calls for service. I assume that's counting the three-town area. Why not? Because if it is, then there's two hundred and sixteen calls that are not in the Millnocket area that's coming out of that. So. We're more than half the population and we're. Less than half of the, or a little bit over half of the calls that are coming in. Three fifty, well, three, we're under half of the calls that are coming in. To them. But they do do a great job. To the chairs report. A group of us tried to establish a, a utility four or five years ago, Lolly Paul, myself, Steve Stanley, Mike Mishu. This is going to be a very expensive proposition. I agree with looking into it, evaluating it. We went up and talked with the Holton facility. We went out over to Eastern Maine and talked to them. To theirs. I, I've visited the ones down in Southern Maine and I've been up to the one in Van Buren many years ago. Versant Power would, I agree, probably aren't going to sell it. They're fighting the efforts at the state level to have the state to make it a public utility. Privately, government-related facility, quadzi-governmental facility of services to eliminate the overhead that private ownership. Causes in that. I do think we should. Look at it, but I do think it's going to be very expensive, even if we tried to tie into Holton, we'd have to pay to get that all down. The, the big savings is transmission and distribution. If you're going to cover the three-town area and you're going to bring it in from away. We're still going to have to pay somebody like Versant to transmit and, and deliver the, the energy that we're going to be purchasing. I don't know what that, that, those figures will be, but I think we're talking tens of millions of dollars. If not hundreds of millions of dollars. FERC relicensing, we've. The town has always supported the relicensing of the, of those dams in the system from Great Northern Paper Company to. All the owners in between before Brookfield being the current owner of it. I do think we should support it. I do have some concerns about the fish ladders, the attempt by the tribes and. And various environmental groups are to bring back the natural species of fish that were here before the dams were built. And of course, the, the native brook trout are native, but these other fish, they coexisted before. They would have an impact on them, but. There's also an effort by a number of those same groups to have the dams taken out. So I think we need to be aware that many of those that are coming up saying, we want to create all of these other activities for, for them to do on relicensing. I just want everybody on the council to be fully aware that there's a lot of. Millnocket residents who are camp owners on the surrounding lakes. They're all intervenors in the. Relicensing process, the lower lakes, the last time it was up, got a, a. Looked a lake level that had to list, that had to last through the summer before they could lower the water below that point. I understand, I do know that the. Upper lakes, the Chisunkook, Ripoginus, Caribou Lake, those areas are make, are making a request. They've filed as intervenors. This time looking for a higher level up there. And full disclosure, I have a camp up there. The last time I walked from my shore down to the lake level was two hundred and seventy-eight feet from the shoreline to where the water was. At an angle, not a drop in, in elevation. But I, I do think it's important the town takes a position supporting relicensing and consider some of the things that are being asked by. Local businesses in reference to which creates the whitewater rafting industry and those types of things. Though there's no suggested changes in the current proposal that's coming down. I think the, I think we're very willing to do the discussion about how to, how can we increase traffic downtown to those activities that. discussion about how to how can we increase traffic downtown to those activities that come in. But it's kind of like the having the snow parade. If we're going to have the either an avenue that snowmobilers can use, we got to keep snow on those roads. So we got to be careful of the local residences, which bring them in to the downtown businesses and is it going to impact local people using the downtown as well. It's a calculation that we just have to look at as as we address that issue. I agreed that we should probably try moving the meetings back. I'm I'm looking probably maybe Tom or or Counselor Madore might be old enough to remember days of old before even you were on the council, Counselor Madore. Did the previous counselors used to have meetings in the evening? When did they start the four thirty in the seventies or eighties? I'll let you answer that when you come on, but I I just, I mean, it's, I do think we should be more accommodating townspeople that do work. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Prey. And just on the police aspects that you referenced. I did see at the last meeting of East Millenocket, they hired three more officers, making them completely fully staffed. So that is very good news for all of us. And also Chief Malcolm, you were referenced a couple of times there. If you wanted to respond to in-person meetings. And your thoughts there?
My thoughts on the in-house in those meetings, I think I think we're almost there. I would like to wait till school goes back. I talked to the hospital and numbers are really looking good. I had a CDC meeting last Friday and there's going to be some changes coming down from them. I haven't had a chance to talk to Josh yet. I want to talk to him to see where the school is going to end up. But I'd like to go ten days after school goes back. So we'd be talking somewhere around the the ninth, our meeting will be at the tenth. So I I think we're pretty close to where we could be doing that. I think we still want to urge people that 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 are not vaccinated to wear masks. Don't think that we believe that. I think we just, you know, it's a it's a be a cordial thing if they if they are not, if they are not vaccinated, they would wear a mask. But I think we're close.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm. So basically assessed between now and the next meeting is your suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll we can keep in touch then between now and the next meeting. Any other counsel comment? Counselor McEwan?
Thank you. Echoing a few comments that have already been made when it comes to the snow down, although I wasn't there. It continues to be a success, I hear, and kudos to Counselor Danforth again for that leadership. Echoing the PD comments, glad that they'll be able to lean in a bit on the ordinance. The only, really the only thing about meeting having like a gathering before the actual council meeting. I would only be concerned as more than a few counselors are in that same room with public in that room in the venue that, you know, would be having council meeting. It could get it would just be concerning statutes on that when there's four counselors in a room and public in the room. It could constitute a meeting. I'm not saying that we're obviously having one because the meeting hasn't been called, but just some concerns I'd like to raise with that. I'm all for public participation and gathering people together, but just be something, something to be concerned about as that idea develops, maybe to look into a bit. Other than that, on the meeting time, before I was on the council, this was actually raised a few points. Moving the meeting time was actually one of them because six, seven years ago, that was a concern as well. I think five o'clock is wanted to push back a little bit, or maybe we want to look at five thirty so people that do leave work can get something to eat, or if their business closes at five and they get out of there, they can grab a snack beforehand. Some other things to think about. When the Katad and Citizens Group was initially kind of put together, there was a kind of a that point was raised. I'm sure there's some people on this call that remember that. When it comes to assessment, revaluation. Just on the point of interior versus exterior, I think it should be a full like a full evaluation of a property. Always can't judge a book by its cover, and I think that goes inverse ways with some of the properties around town. A lot of people have made improvements. But some people make a lot of exterior improvements without doing interior improvements and vice versa. So I think when you actually extrapolate those numbers and look at those differences, it'd be good to do a full revaluation of each property, knowing that that would drive the cost up a bit. I actually have no problem in doing in-house evaluations, though, knowing that there is some staff restraints, obviously, when it comes to hours into that. I have no issue with the bias on that. I think we have professionals here, especially our assessor that does a great job in knowing what knowing what they need to do and what needs to get done. But looking at that full summary of our options again will will be nice, though we we do need to come to some sort of resolution on this soon. Again, this is another point that's been discussed for years. Snowmobile access to downtown, probably my last short point. Before I got involved in all the other things I got involved in, I did go go for my education was in parks, recreation, tourism. You know, we could all state our, you know, what we went to school for, but that's something I'm not necessarily involved with all the time, but it's it's very evident, knowing our area, the studies of economic dollars coming in to this area fed by recreation and tourism and snowmobile access, it's evident where snowmobilers go, where they go to vacation, just like in the summer, they come here to enjoy their time, but they're also coming here to spend quite a bit of money. And they're going to go to where they have access to, and we should have had access to downtown a long time ago, but I say that with full respect of the Northern Timber Cruisers doing everything they've done to expand trails and networks in in this community. I know it's more complicated than just saying, let's make this trail downtown. It's a state highway. A lot of other factors are involved. But the real truth is that if we like coming from, you know, looking at CDBG downtown revitalization. If you want to look at injecting economic dollars in one of the, you know, more trying times of the community, it's getting access to snowmobiles downtown. And there are experts on this call that could speak a little bit more than me on the on that, but I'm in full support of it. It's something that should have happened yesterday, and we need to figure out a way to make it happen. And if whatever support the town can give and making that a possibility, making it a reality, actually, it it just has to happen. So I'll leave that there. And otherwise, I appreciate everything else that's been said and that's on the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McEwan.
I was clapping. That was a clapping emoji.
Peter added a clapping emoji to your snowmobiling comment. I didn't know if he was raising his hand sitting right.
I was trying to figure out what that was, but.
Yeah, and I'm right here.
Thank you.
Counselor Danforth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the others for thanking me, but I don't deserve all that thanks. It was certainly a team approach. Tom Malcolm was there night and day to make sure the complex was in condition so that we could be there safely. Worked with Ralph and the rec department. And our manager was front and center all day during the snow down with his family, so it was a very special day. And I was really glad, excuse me, of the turnout. So teamwork. Also, on the valuation, I favor in-house, would like to know the costs associated with both options. You know, outside and inside, so look forward to getting those numbers before I can make a decision. You know, I heard both sides, counselors, Pelletier and Prey, you know, suggesting start with the outside and then the queuing to say do the full valuation. So I really want some more data around that before I make a decision. Not quite sure which way I lean just now. Around in-person meetings. So I did have a conversation with Bob Peterson this afternoon. And he did say, while, you know, COVID is on the decline, it is still here. So he just cautioned us to stay prudent. If we had in-person meetings to stay masked up, he said, you know, look at the month of March, but you know, if you go back in person, you don't know who's vaccinated, stick with wearing masks, perhaps for the month of March and then reassess afterwards. So but I agree with what Chief Malcolm has said. Let's look at it in a couple of weeks, but I'm ready to to go back in person and would wear my mask. Around the chair's report. I do favor exploring. You know, whether we join Eastern Maine Electric Co-op or form in our own. I did hear Counselor Prey with his background and information on that, how costly and you know, how a long of a process would be, but I think we should explore. I need to learn more. I've got a lot to learn about it, so I want to hear as much as possible. So I'm all about exploring the options and learning more about that. Downtown access, you know, whether it's snowmobile or ATV. Counselor McEwan, I think you hit it right on the nail on the head, you know, being a recreation community. And reading some of those comments, even though I try to stay clear of Facebook and making comments, I could I hear what the public is saying, and I think we need to explore. It'd be interesting what John Raymond has to say if he has some ideas around that. Certainly, safety is the number one issue in what the route would be. But having access to the downtown and to our the restaurants down there, I think that is huge, and we need to see how potentially that might work. I favor changing up our meeting structure or meeting time starting later. Not ready for a potluck, maybe after March, April, as far as eating in in person. I'm still going to be very cautious of that, but I want to be as available as possible and would come earlier to meetings, or if there's another way, if it wasn't before meetings, another time or day of the week where it was advertised that some counselors would be available to just chat and talk about the community. I'm open for for trying something new and starting a little bit later. So I think that's it for me. Thanks. Great report, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Counselor Danforth. Counselor Madore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I want to go ahead and give a big shout out to the Fin and Feather Club. I think they do a marvelous job with the fishing derby that they have done. Jerry Pawn, I think the manager hit it right on the head. I think Jerry Pawn is probably one of the most underutilized assets the town has. And I would love to see more events take place down there. We have Kids Day down there, obviously the fishing derby, but I think family organizations or family gatherings where people can bring their kids down and that to utilize the the facility, I think, would be absolutely outstanding. But again, thank you again to the Fish Fin and Feather Club for doing a marvelous job. Once again, their numbers aren't all that what they used to be, but they still seem to get a great opportunity to get job done when they need to. As far as the manager reaching out to Chief McDonough. It's a step in the right direction. Only time will tell whether it actually makes any impact as far as whether the East Millenocket PD will actually do any type of summonzing or whatever for the issues that we have. But certainly a line of communication to get started. I think all these I think having to get the boundaries down of what is expected of East Millenocket PD, I think, needs to be happening more and more and sooner and sooner because there are certain expectations that I believe the community has. I mean, they're doing a great job for what they're doing right now, but I believe there are more services that they can offer or at least be cognizant of. And I think we need to keep on that to make sure that those lines are are drawn, so they know where the town's expectations for them are. I trust the assessor's ability to 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 do an exterior audit. I don't think we're right necessarily right now. We've we've bandied about about doing a reevaluation for years and years and years. And I would say right now I would go with an exterior. It's better than nothing. And certainly, we have a very capable person in the assessor that could do a great job, and she has already from some parts. I think it could be done in a timely fashion, and I I think that outside would suffice. I believe that we, as far as getting ready for the municipal budget, I think it's time for the town to set a date. Possibly in the latter part of March to start the workshops for budget consideration. I think that would give ample time for the departments to go ahead and get their budgets ready so that we can go through the workshop process. The earlier we start, the better off we are to go ahead and get a handle on it, as Counselor Prey and I have have done this a lot and really always preached getting started early, and so I would look for that. I think that probably the third week in March or right in that area would be a good time to start. I also like what the manager has done here. I don't think it's really fair to put somebody on the spot on social media or to air town laundry or complaints or concerns and try to go ahead and when there is ample opportunity to contact the manager during business hours, leaving emails, leaving messages. I I don't think he has to delve, or any counselor for that matter, on social media dealing with citizens initiatives. We, our phone numbers are available, our emails are available. There are ways to contact and I'd like to go ahead and think that, you know, by Peter putting this out there, that maybe just maybe the the public will get the the message that social media isn't the place to to transact business or try to go ahead and get problems solved that way. I'd like Counselor Prey, if anybody has saw the Bangor Daily last weekend. MRC is in the in the I guess investigative stages on whether or not they can buy the hand and plant. Unlike what people think, MRC owns the land under the plant, but they do not own the facility itself. The facility itself is owned by somebody else. And what they'd like to do or trying to do, find out if they can legally buy that property to or take it over from them. And I think that's going to be a big problem because that's going to drag out and drag out. But I would like to have a meeting and I would like to have the MRC come up and give us an update on what's going on. I think it's way past time for them to do so, and I can, I'd rather keep the line of communication open there too to know what's going on. I know even though Ralph is part of or was part of MRC's board for a while. The what I my question is, I I see that there's been interviews for the CID and the code enforcement positions. My question is, when can the the council expect a hiring in those in those two positions?
Counselor Madore, as long as the budgets are approved for each of those positions, I'm prepared to make offers in the next couple of days.
For both positions?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. I was just wondering when when that was going to happen. Oh, let's see, as far as what the 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 chair has. When it comes to FERC and the relicensing, the impact and everything else, of course, we've always supported the fact that the dam relicensing is very important to the town of Millenocket. And it is. But I I think our support. I'd like to see Brookfield become more of a friendly neighbor. If they, if if I I just think that Brookfield has not appreciated our support in the past and obviously, I I think they could do a little bit better from their angle too. I mean, they want our support, fine. I mean, they could also support the community as well. And I think that's, I I don't know how necessarily to convey that message to them, but I I think it's important. And I think it's very important to Brookfield that they get the town support moving forward on their dam relicensing coming up. So I would look for that. I have no desire whatsoever in the time of COVID to have To have a meet and greet, community supper, get together, whatever you want to call it before meetings. It's one thing to to go back to public meetings, and I am, I I really would like to have in-person meetings, I fully support that. Whether that's just with the council and at first, and then bring the public in. At a time when it's considered a lot safer or whatever, people need to be masked up, but I think. Getting a a group of people for socialization. At this time, I think it's counterproductive to what we've been doing, I mean, we've been doing Zoom, we've been doing these meetings, why? To keep everybody safe, and now you want to go ahead and have a a potluck supper to get everybody together. In the time of COVID, it it's it's kind of. I believe it's counterproductive, and I I have no desire to support it at this time. Now, as far as the dates and time for the meeting. And Counselor Prey, you're right, I've been around for a long time, and yes, the meetings were at seven o'clock at one time in the evening, and people complained because they were too late. And then they moved into six o'clock, and people complained they were too late, and then they moved them earlier, early in time, and people complained now that they're too early. So no matter where you move the time of the meeting, you're not going to please everybody, and not everybody's going to get a chance to go ahead and. Fit it in their schedule or whatever, it's harder for the public to fit into the. It's harder for the council to fit into the public schedule than for the public to fit into the council's schedule. So I I have no desire now that we, this format for council meetings has worked fine. Ultimately, this isn't a selectmen form of government. So as much as I would, you know, I have encouraged people to come and talk in front of the council. I have no desire to revamp the the entire situation again. And then a few years down the road from here, people saying, it's too late, I want it to be earlier, so I I. I'm in favor of keeping it as it is, where it is, but just be in person. The snowmobilers, I I look what's going on with the ATVers now. In the summer, and the complaints that people are giving, law enforcement chasing ATVers around town. Yes, I'd like to give everybody access and free access to the downtown area for ATVs and snowmobiles. And we did to a certain extent, and the fact that snowmobiles were allowed to come in at the top of. Katon Avenue and come down into the park and access the downtown from that direction. But I I'd have to see a much more, I'd have to see a very detailed proposal of how we could go ahead. And make it safe for snowmobiles and cars to be in an area like that. Because all you've got to do is for a liability for municipality is have one snowmobiler, just one. Get hit by a car or that, and you're going to open up a lot of problems. And our main street was barely built for the transportation of automobiles the way they are. And if you get a UPS truck or FedEx truck on Main Street, and. You can't barely, you barely see around them when they're trying to make deliveries, can you imagine if there was a snowmobile somewhere in there? So yeah, there's got to be a lot more detail to this, and I'm not really overly. I just don't think it's it's the right situation, the right time, the right matrix, but if somebody can come up with something, if. If John Raymond and the Snowmobile Club can come up with something, that's fine, I'll listen to it, I'll look at it, I value his opinion, so. For that, yes, I can, I can see that one working fine. That's all I have with the management board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Madore. I'll go to the public in a second, just want to reiterate, so I'll check in with Tom. Ahead of the the next meeting to see where we're at with COVID-related issues on whether or not to do in person or not. I also heard the majority being open to the five thirty. I personally feel that it's worth responding to and adjusting to. The concerns and needs of the community, and if that's what's overwhelmingly being expressed. Moving in an hour, I don't think is going to hurt anyone at all. In fact, I think it conveys a message that we are listening and we are willing to try moving an hour. Ahead of what we normally do, and I don't think that's a very difficult thing to do. So with that, I will be looking at moving our next meetings to five thirty. I also want to thank Jane and all those who are involved in the successful event, Fin and Feather, same thing. I'm also just incredibly grateful to see. Item after item on this manager's report of things that we've asked for and requested, and all of it make it on here. All of it with substantial information and all of it responding to exactly what we wanted to know. I'm just incredibly impressed with the quality and the responsiveness of the report. And just a big thank you to our manager for that. And with that, I will go to the public for any comment, there has been some in the chat, so I'll start with those. Sandra Sullivan said, thank you, Mr. Jameson, for making clear that Millinocket ordinances need to be upheld by the East Millinocket Police Department, does not make sense otherwise. Susan Del Sandro liked the chair report feature, thank you. Erica Macken said, thank you for all the efforts to make these meetings more available and transparent, much appreciated. And Sandra Sullivan again asked, Mr. Chairman, when you say the PD is fully staffed, do you mean Millinocket will now have more than one person on patrol per shift? And are we responsible for the additional cost for them? Yes, we will have more than one person on shift. We had an order, either the meeting before this or the one prior, where we were hiring two more officers. To serve our town specifically, so this will allow for us to have more than one officer twenty-four seven. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the out of order item here. Which is order number twenty-nine, twenty-two, and if I could have Counselor Madore read that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, order number twenty-nine dash twenty-two, providing for approval to revise FY twenty-two. School Special Dedicated Revenue Clearing Account. Whereas order eleven dash twenty-two increased the FY twenty-two school special dedicated revenue clearing account budget. Fifty thousand dollars from one million, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars to one million, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and whereas the current school budget. Is estimated to be three million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, it is ordered. That the Millinocket Town Council approves the revised special dedicated revenue budget of three million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. With the condition that any budget line overruns will be repaid to the town from the school's current budget. Or from their fund balance, and it is further ordered that the one million, five hundred thousand dollars is transferred from the undesigned fund balance. To fund the additional cash flow requirements.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Madore and second by Counselor Danforth. Just noting that both of the Joshes are here, the superintendent and also Josh Deacon, thank you for being here and. Being available for us, I know that there has been some concerns raised in some previous meetings regarding this issue. But I'm going to turn this over to the manager as he and Mary Alice are familiar with this, and for them to also. Bring you into the conversation as needed, Mr. Manager.
But well, mu- much of this information has been. Reported and and spoken to at the two previous meetings as. In regard to the increased budget due to the COVID grants that that school has has received. And the the concern from the council has been, of course, the the municipality. Is. Has has an arrangement to to cash flow the, you know, the 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 school spending accounts during these processes and and at this point with the with the. Drastically increased. Spending because of the, you know, the great opportunities that that we had with the the COVID grant funding. Through the federal government. So that that has increased, increased so much so that. You know, the the councils certainly had some further questions that they wanted to. Receive answers to, speaking to the reimbursement process. Timelines and and things of that nature. So I I think that. Seeing that this information has been put forward a couple of times, I would recommend that if there were specific questions. Regarding that process, that counselors would. Would either ask them specifically or see if Mr. Deacon or Dr. McTotten would would be. Willing to give an overview on that as well, acknowledgement in a in a public setting, you know. Where the, you know, the 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 total amount of of these costs. You know, when looking at our unassigned fund balance. You know, of course, we understand that the the grant application process is very detailed and. You know, very well guarantees reimbursement. The initial hit. In terms of spending to the unassigned fund balances, obviously concerned by the council. And those within the community as well. So I would I would yield back to to the council to see what direction they would want to go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Counselor Peltier, then Madore.
You hear me all right?
Yeah, sure can.
Hold on. I just couldn't see that, but yeah, my question is. This is a the totality of our unrestricted funds, if we transfer, you know, the total three million. So what's the town left with a cash flow? I don't understand how you can accept a grant for the school system and not have. Planned for the cash flow issue. Is. Has has a million five already been expended by the school on this grant? If so. What reimbursements have been applied for? Haven't been received, what is the time spent, I mean. We can't just. Go along and try and and manage our municipal budget with a unrestricted fund of less than two million dollars. Just doesn't sound financially sound. I'll let you answer those questions and maybe I'll have more.
Counselor Peltier, I'll just note that the schedule that you're requesting is in the packet there, if you see it. It will break down when at least the expenditures will be, but I think to add to that question though, and and Josh, feel free to answer. What are your expectations of when that will be reimbursed? The timeframe of that, have you already experienced reimbursements, how how is the time? The timeframe there as well that you could speak to.
Yeah, so to answer the first question, I'd have asked it through, we spent eighty-nine thousand dollars out of that one point seven million dollars. I've met with Mary Alice and Peter, I provided a kind of a rough timeframe. Of the grant, this grant does take us through September of twenty-three. So as far as reimbursement, we can only have and submit for one reimbursement piece at a time. And they're running on average six to eight week period of time for that money to come back in. So what we do is we conclude a project or a part of a project, we submit that. Once that comes back, we submit for another one, so it's kind of, it's been a revolving cycle, I mean, this has been going on for a couple of years now. Through the S R one, S R two, and now the S R three grant, so.
So. You've, so the money that's being reimbursed. You roll that into your, you return it to the towns on your strict.
Yeah, the the reimbursements go back to the town because you you folks are funding the money for the grant efforts, the projects.
So the time span. You, this one million five would lower our unrestricted fund to basically one million five. And. Given the reimbursements, we should be built back up in time for you to expend the next half of it. Is that correct?
Yeah, what we've done, I I provided that timeframe to, so the council could understand the processes, because we don't want to hit the town all at once with this. There are some bigger projects on there that are going to be larger sums of money, as you can see. But we've got some, we've got a little bit of time to work on this, there are some pieces that are time sensitive. You know, like healthcare services, we have, you know, funds coming out of that. When you start looking at some of the learning loss recovery pieces. The summer programming, obviously those are time sensitive, but the bigger projects, you know, we we plan to. Like the paving project, things along those lines, those are the bigger projects, those are going to happen hopefully this summer. But you know, with that being said, for transparency purposes, we are running into the same thing that a lot of municipalities and even. Residents and citizens are of availability of things. You know, we've had pieces of this brand out there for a while, and we haven't been able to secure certain things with it either, so. And that just goes down to basic availability.
Thank you, Counselor Peltier, if you're finished.
I'm just wondering if their grant estimates are all locked in here for the services, given the rising cost of all these constructions and stuff.
Yeah, that's a great question, when we write the grants themselves, everything's broken out into projects or programs. What you see is just a detail, a list of the program and the allocations for it. The application itself is very, very detailed into what exactly, you know, if we wrote a project for a hundred thousand dollars per se. Every little piece of that is broken out within that grant, so when that grant gets submitted to the state. Who's managing it for the federal government, when they approve that, that guarantees that if we spend that money in that manner, we get that money back. Now, if we do run into a situation, let's say the cost of a paving project goes up or whatnot. We do have options to be able to reopen the grant and reallocate money within that. And that can be an ongoing process that school departments use right up until the end of the grant.
Thank you.
Mary Alice, do you have anything you wanted to add to that? Just that overall conversation, I saw you were looking at talking at one point.
The the unassigned fund balance from the the audit report I'm reviewing right now for FY. Twenty-one is four point four million dollars. So setting aside a million and a half, we're still, we're still in the three million dollar cushion. Of course, I don't know what other demands there are, we're looking at a point in time right now. We do know, so keeping that in mind, I think, you know, I think it's important when you talk about fund balance. We know the school has the need and that we set this aside because it's something you need to keep your eye on. It's going to. It's going to go down as the reimbursements come in, but it's all going to be dependent on the timing of these expenditures. And like the superintendent said, he can only get have one reimbursement request out there. So it could very well be that while he's waiting for two hundred thousand dollars to be reimbursed, he goes and spends five hundred thousand. So now we've got seven hundred in the pipeline, I mean, I'm just using that as an example, may not be the case. I think what's important is that. We're all looking at this, the school as well as myself, and we have the reporting that we can keep our eye on. How how this is going and what the town's exposure is. As we move along, and if and if I see that we're getting deeper into that. In addition to what other requirements are out there, then we're going to have to have another discussion.
Thank you, Mary Alice, that's helpful. And to to both Josh, as I meant to preface this conversation with. Not only appreciating you being here, but obviously as a council, we have an obligation to the taxpayers to explain why large amounts of money are being transferred. So I just want you to understand, these questions are more for not only, you know, our uncertainty on how the process will go. But also for reporting that to the community and, and being able to have answers for them. So I appreciate you being on, willing to take these questions. Councilor Madore, your hand is up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm not overly convinced that. Committing. One point five million at this time is a good idea from the undecided fund balance. I looked down through the projected timelines. For expenditures and I'm seeing. Improving school facilities, portions could be delayed to the summer of twenty twenty three. The paving. You know, almost four hundred thousand dollars in, in parking lot repairs and paving. I, I can, I can see moving some money to the school. For essentials. And a lot of those are talked about here, summer programming, technology, learning recovery. But there are some of these things that are big ticket items that I don't believe warrant tying up. I, I think the, the treasurer is right. I think we could in the process of. Having grants out there or applying for them and waiting for the reimbursement to come in, we could end up. Tying up a, a, a great deal of money, waiting for a, a return to come in and. I'm just not comfortable with committing one point five million. For all this right now. I just think there are some things that. Are essential. That yes. But other things are not in a hurry and I just don't see the allocation right now to go ahead and. Put out there for, like I say. I'm looking at projects. Twenty twenty three, and I know there's an explanation of trying to get people to hire people to do them. But. Again. I think a, a, a parking lot right now, when we're tying up that kind of money, isn't necessarily. A, a, a great investment or, or a good way to put money out there that may take a while to get back. And with that, I'll say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Madore, Councilor McKeown.
Thank you. Thank you to the school staff here today and administration really. For the information and providing some more information on this. I have no issue with this. As was mentioned. There's really a buffer here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but once we allocate these, a check for one point five isn't going to disappear from the account. This is a line item that's being marked. These are professionals operating grant stipulations. There have to be records on that. These balances have to be reconciled appropriately. There's going to be reimbursements that get dumped back into the fund to, you know, reappropriate those funds back into the town coffers. I think this is really a non-issue and this is for our students. So that's, that's where I stand on. I'll be supporting this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKeown, Councilor Prey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure that we need to do it all at once because you're talking basically about the current year's budget and the following year's budget. And the fund balance that we have available will fluctuate based upon how we go. The question is, could we get a set of projects that takes us through the calendar year twenty twenty two? And how much you would need for that alone for the town to commit? I, I, I have some problems with this order. In the fact that it says that if there's any budget lines overrun, they'll be repaid from the school, the current school budget. We're not going to take money out of the current school budget. The current school budget is educating the kids. So you know that. That, I don't know how they come in and say, okay, you know, we're going to pay you back three hundred thousand. How's that going to impact the school year? The town is ultimately responsible no matter which way you go and, and no matter what happens. I kind of agree with Counselor McKeown that, you know, this is. This whole system and process of, of getting these federal funds are, are, are put under a microscope. And the, getting the application, getting it out, it is a time flow, a cash flow issue with us. And that's why I think if we could divide it into how much money is needed immediately for the next. Eight, ten months, twelve months, because we can only kind of commit to a degree. Because there's going to be a new council and they could always change it. Or if there's a situation such as a depression in the economy and we, uh, sales tax and revenue sharing money goes down. Not by being cut like the last administration when, when they had kind of a mini recession. But just the flow of cash is going to go down and that's going to impact what we're spending on. So I'd like to see if, if either. Josh or. Or Mary Alice could comment on that perspective.
Mary Alice, did you have any comments on that?
Well, I mean. Once a budget is approved for the school. Then, you know, what I do is I manage, I, I, I'm tracking the, to his expenditures to the budget. I, I don't. Me, I don't, I don't have the authority to instruct him as to how he, when he can spend the money. So, you know, you're getting into a territory that's outside of what. Really my responsibilities are in my relationship in, in how, in how I interact with the school. You know, you approve the budget and then it's up to the superintendent to spend within the terms of that budget. As he manages the, the, the schedule. So there's, there's that point. And the other point in the order about the, should there be an overrun that it goes back to the school budget? What happens in, in the superintendent can jump in here too. Is that as I see, if there's allocation of, of costs that go into these, these special revenue funds. And when they get to, when we get to the end of the year, there's kind of a truing up of. Expenses and some of them get moved back into the school budget so that at the end of this, at the end of the fiscal year. We are at a. Basically a zero, net sum zero, and that is an activity that, that takes place. That, you know, so I don't know that that in and of itself is going to be a big problem. I don't think the school would go and overspend huge sums of money. It would be just a truing up of, of allocation of costs.
Josh, you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. So yeah, as far as the, the, the. The whole piece about over expending a program and then, you know, taking it out of the school budget, that's not going to happen. These programs are very, very specific of what we can spend here. Now, with that being said, you know, if our summer program, we have fifteen thousand dollars and we spend fifteen thousand and twenty five dollars. Through the grant process, we can reallocate that twenty five dollars out of another, out of another program. So we have that built in protection there. It's like moving from one, one program to the next. So we've got the flexibility to do that. It's a simple rewrite within the grant program that we submit to the state. As, as far as the total amount, I, I do want to throw a little caution into the wind here. We do not want to be at the end of this grant, sitting there with hundreds of thousands of dollars of unspent money. You know, this is money that we are being able to get some facilities projects done. We've been able to, are going to be addressing student learning loss, technology pieces, curriculum pieces. These are all pieces that are extremely expensive to throw into a school budget on a regular basis. So. From the school's perspective, we need to take every bit of advantage of this as we can. With that being said, you know, we forward plan, you know, there's, there's pieces in here. You know, we've been looking for a piece of equipment associated with one of these programs since August. We haven't found one yet. You know, that's why I put some flexibility in the writing and the timing of this. You know, the paving project, we have every intention of having that hopefully done this summer. But I can't sit here and guarantee you that that's going to be done this summer based on availability of, of workers and the crews and the people. Technology is another great piece. We've been fighting since the beginning of COVID. We'll put technology orders in and they will sit there for months and months literally before we receive any devices. So I could tell you tomorrow, we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on technology and it could be six months before we get an invoice for it. So. I just, I want to throw that caution in the wind. We just, you know, at the end of this grant, we don't want to be sitting there giving money back to the federal government. That, you know, we could have spent to upgrade our facilities and educate our students.
Thank you. I appreciate that because also if you don't spend it, it gets reallocated to other schools, systems and so forth. As does all the opera funds that are, that are going out. Councilor Madore is the only one on here that in twenty eleven, when the previous administration at the state. Reduced monies to the school system by two hundred and seventy eight thousand. And the town stepped up and paid that difference because that was part of the, the budget process, but it was a program that was by state law was allocated. Based upon student population and, and whatnot and, and. Again, the previous administration got mad because the town of Melonocket wouldn't buy the, the Dobie landfill. Along with East Melonocket, which is in the boundaries of East Melonocket, Melonocket. So there's always some things out there that. As I said, we're going to cover the school. If there's a shortfall of revenues, the town's probably going to dig into the reserves anyway to make sure the school continues to operate. This is for additional. Ability to operate and provide those services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Prey. Any other council comment? Councilor Danforth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counselor McKeown. This is a non-issue for me to support the school, this, the federal funds, the grant funds that they have. This is a good thing for the school to be able to get these funds and for us to be able to facilitate that to happen. I appreciate our treasurer's input. What we have in the fund balance, you know, and that providing them this amount still keeps us at that three million dollar threshold that we want to. Be at and that we'll just keep checking back. I, I just feel, I know how the federal grant process works. There's lots of checks and balances you have. I, I just, I don't feel like this is that we're putting ourselves at risk at all, especially the way that they laid it out. And I think probably the scrutiny, scrutiny that's happening right now is going to continue throughout the life of this grant cycle, but I'm, I'm in favor of this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Any other council comment? I'll just add that I again appreciate. Both of you being here, Josh, also I see school board members here as well. Thank you for being so involved in this discussion. And also to Mary Alice for making some points clear. I'm feeling a lot more comfortable with this process, especially knowing how much more. We're looking at having in our unassigned fund balance. A big concern of mine was having. Half of it gone and that's, that's absolutely not something I would have been. Okay with. I'm going to do a quasi-public comment in my own because this is one of my questions as well. Susan Del Sandro wrote. If this is the third, is this the third time for this process? If it is, what has been done for the first two of these? Also, what are the chances, the second part is what I was going to ask, what are the chances of a grant request being in whole or in part denied? Did you have a response for that, Josh? If, if one of your grant requests were in whole or in part denied?
So they're, they're already approved. Part of the application process is we submit the program to the state with all the details and breakdown. So everything you see on the list is already approved. So there's no chance of it being denied.
Thank you, Josh. So for me, you know, I, and kind of to respond to Susan's first question. You know, I, I wanted to know all these things myself. I know a lot of other counselors did too, to make sure that we're making a good decision here with such a large sum of money. I think this is an incredible opportunity for the school. To be able to get a tremendous amount of resources that otherwise would never have been available. I mean, to have this one time opportunity basically to get that entire list of items paid for. That's incredible. Hearing from Mary Alice and how the process would be, especially her keeping tabs on how this is all going, gives me a lot of. A lot of confidence in it as well. So for me, I, I will be supporting this. Yes, please.
I just wanted to also thank. Dr. McDon'ton and Mr. Deacon for joining us and members of the school board that were here. I. Hope that we can continue this type of open and supportive conversation moving forward. You know, there are some. Pre-existing barriers to that relationship that. You know, are, are, are not relevant and lingering from past times and. I, I'd really like to see these two groups. Working in more supportive synergy moving forward and I, I'm just, I'm glad to see the two of you here having this conversation and the support of your. School board as well, which I also have a. Holds a special place in my heart after the past couple of years. So I, I, I really appreciate the work that you all do and I'm. I'm hoping that this relationship can continue to. Grow it stronger and, and we can work very openly and closely moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Going back to public comment now. Unless there's anything else, Josh, or Josh, you wanted to add before going to public comment, and there might be questions from the public as well.
Yeah, I think the last thing I add, you know, as this, you guys make your decision to move forward. If it would be helpful as this grant progresses for me to give updates to the council, I'd be glad to join a meeting and do that at any time, so.
That would be, thank you.
You're welcome.
Going to the public, Sandra Sullivan wrote in chat, I know nothing about grants, but if we can get. Four hundred thousand dollars to pave a parking lot that will eventually need paving, I would rather use the grant than tax money. Jeff Campbell, I saw your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted, Jeff Campbell, three, Jennifer Street Airport Manager, having dealt with the FAA. Grants that are very similar to what I'm hearing on this. This really, especially this infrastructure side of this grant. If there's money approved to pave a parking lot that we're going to get fully reimbursed for, that we're going to have to pave eventually anyway. If we leave it be. It's tremendous to get that money. To, to fix these infrastructure items. Just as important to as educating the kids is to also have a place to educate the kids. So our infrastructure is older, our infrastructure is failing. The airport situation is a classic example. So. What also speaks to me on this is the fact that our treasurer, who is very in tune with what's going on, is not screaming at you to. Not do this. She is actually in tune with doing this. So I mean, that speaks a lot to me personally. So that, that's my two cents. If you can get your parking lot paved and have the government pay for it, by all means, you need to do it. Thank you.
Jeff. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor, Councilor Peltier?
Hi.
Councilor Bragdon.
Hi.
Councilor Madore.
Hi.
Chair Golay-Vike, Councilor McKeown.
Hi.
Councilor Danforth.
Hi.
Councilor Prey.
Hi.
And the order passes seven zero. Thank you again, both Josh's and to all the school board members here and Mary Alice for. This ongoing conversation. And with that, we'll move to. The rest of the new business. Councilor Peltier, if I could have you read order number twenty four, twenty twenty two, please.
Certainly. Order number twenty four dash twenty twenty two, providing for execution of the town warrant for February twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. It is ordered to the town warrant for February twenty fourth, twenty twenty two in the amount of ninety one thousand, hundred forty one dollars, thirty six cents is hereby approved.
Motion by Councilor Peltier, seconded by Councilor Madore. Discussion of the council, heavy hitters?
Sure, Blumer and Russell, four thousand, two hundred seventy three dollars and fifty cents. Dice Art Service Fuel Oil, ten thousand, six hundred and sixty six dollars and eighty four cents. Three thousand, three hundred and two dollars, twenty four cents for. Farrell, Rosenblatt and Russell, that's the Brookfield Tax Appeal Lawyers. Three thousand, seven hundred and thirty eight dollars, seventy eight cents for Mellocka Regional Hospital Supplies Test Kits. Three thousand, four hundred and eighty eight dollars and forty cents for M P E Equipment Solutions, Inc. That's recreational department equipment. Thirteen thousand, sixty one dollars, forty six cents for Municipal Review Committee. Of course, that's our trash. Four thousand, six hundred and six dollars, eleven cents, Provo Oil Company, fuel oil. Nineteen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars, fifty cents. For town of East Millen Rocket, recreational department contract. Eleven thousand, one twenty six, sixty seven cents for Versum Power or Electric.
Thank you, Councilor Palteer. Any other council comment? Now the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Councilor Prey?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
Hi.
Councilor McKeown?
Hi.
Chair Gollyby, Councilor Madore?
Hi.
Councilor Braggan?
Hi.
Councilor Palteer?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. Councilor Palteer, back to you again. If I could have you read order number twenty-five, twenty-two, please?
Order number twenty-five dash twenty-two, providing for execution of wastewater warrant for February twenty-fourth, twenty-two. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for February twenty-fourth, twenty-two, in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents is approved.
Second. Motion by Councilor Palteer, seconded by Councilor Madore. Have you hitters on that?
Person Power for eight thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Thank you very much. Any other council comment? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, Councilor Palteer?
Hi.
Councilor Braggan?
Hi.
Councilor Madore?
Hi.
Chair Gollyby, Councilor McKeown?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
Hi.
Councilor Prey, the order?
Hi.
The order passes seven zero. And moving to order number twenty-nine, twenty-two, Councilor Braggan, if I could have you read that, please? Oh, excuse me, twenty-six?
Yeah. Yes, I will read twenty-six. Order number twenty-six dash twenty-two, providing for approval of the adoption of the town council committee's policy. Whereas with utilization of town council committees assessing subjects and issues of the town interest and proposing recommendations for the council's consideration in council sessions, and whereas in an effort to create clarity, consistency, transparency, and efficiency across all committees and practices. Now it is therefore ordered that the Millenocket Town Council adopt the attached town council committee policy.
Was that a second, Councilor Palteer?
Yes, it was. Second.
Motion by Councilor Braggan, seconded by Councilor Palteer. Discussion of the council, I'll just mention, so I wrote up this committee policy with some input for some other counselors and for the manager as well to help make this a bit better crafted. So I appreciate everyone's input. I thought it was about time, especially with the increased use of committees and the recommendations coming to the council. Which is, in my view, a very good thing, means we're really doing a lot of work and our homework on how we can improve the town. I thought it'd be very helpful to have a standard way of operating that's clear-cut for everyone, including for the council. The major component to this, for me anyway, is if any recommendations are made, there's a list of things that have to be provided to the council. That includes a brief summary of what the recommendation is. All the meeting dates that it was discussed, so the council can see how often this is actually put to discussion, especially involving the public. What the public input may have been from those discussions. And also for the committee to take a vote. I think it's important that the council understands if there are any opposing views, what those opposing views might be. Including obviously what the recommendations are in favor of. And then any research documentation or anything to support that. I think on the council level, you know, for those who aren't regularly participating in maybe one or two of the committees, but are in others, may not know really what took place. And to be able to see that okay, this, this certain issue was talked about for, you know, ten or fifteen times over the span of a year. Here's the eventual vote. I think that speaks a lot to how much it was, not only puts the public, but also research discussed and all those things as well. So that's one part. And then the second half of it speaks more to the process of how they function. I know there's been concern about how many counselors can be on a committee versus attend as a public member, what that differentiation might be. In here, it clearly states that the maximum of three counselors can serve on a committee. That if any other counselors are present, they would have to be so as a member of the public. They obviously don't vote as a, as a member of the committee either. Anyway, I put this to the council to review. Suggestions are still welcome at this point. Any, any comment from the council? Councilor Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the document. There's just one sentence that I, I will be asking for it to be taken out. And so that's where it says items may not be added to the agenda after being publicly posted. Sometimes there's a need to add something to the agenda at the last minute, might be time sensitive. So I just find that a little constraining. As one that does do a lot of meetings, you like to stick to the agenda and get through it, but there are times that things need to be added, you know, just like at our council meetings, we might have to adjust the agenda. So that would be my recommendation, or that would be what I would like. Otherwise, the rest of it, I'm fine with.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. And that's certainly something that I grappled with because obviously we see that happen on the committee or the council level as well. Items being amended or changed or orders being added. The reason I put it in there is because if we do get a recommendation from a committee that says that they met three times. But the item was added to the agenda the day of or the day before. And the public was not properly notified, either one, two, or even three of those times. I would be concerned about how that would be portrayed. I would like the public to have ample time to be able to respond to some of these issues. For example, short-term rentals is obviously a very important issue in the community. If I didn't include it on an agenda item until the day of or a couple of days before. But yet I put it in the recommendation to council as a date that we had discussed it, I feel it would, it would not properly reflect that it was fully discussed. That was my concern.
So yeah, so not all committee members, like, you know, I chair the age friendly, not all meetings have high to the word, controversial issues that you're talking about that might need lots of vetting. It might just be a simple topic. And like you're asking, if anything came to the council that you would include all the information, how many times people, you know, you met and it was brought up. So it would be laid out to the council before, like if a final decision or formal decision need to be made. I'm just, just thinking about some general conversation that might happen, or if you have a last-minute opportunity to plug a speaker in or something like that, that there's just a little bit of flexibility.
Sure, I would, in that case, be open to changing it to where any recommendations may not include any items that were not on the agenda at the time of posting, in other words. So we could take that sentence out as you requested. But if you add a item to the agenda of that issue, that cannot count as a meeting date towards the recommendation if there is one. I can explain that in a different way.
I'd like, I'd like to hear from other counselors, yes.
Councilor Prey?
You and I had talked about some of that as well, and the interest is not having something surprise the public. If you have a poor attended meeting and all of a sudden it comes out and being recommended. If it's an emergency situation, the council doesn't need the committee to meet on it first. We can address that situation. So I think the purpose of the committee is try to do a broader planning. But if it's an emergency situation, the council would be addressing it anyway. It doesn't require a council to have a recommendation from a committee.
Thank you, Councilor Prey. Councilor Braggan, your hand was up?
Yeah, I, I agree with Jane. I'm still learning, this being my first time chairing a committee. There are some things that I've gotten, like information for the last committee, committee meeting that we had, that came up the day of that I had that meeting. So I added it to the agenda, even though it was just given to me. How I understand it and how you worded the adjustment was, is if I bring something to the agenda and we decide to continue with it, I would have to roll it over to the next meeting in order to qualify it on that cover letter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would be fine with that. I mean, that, that, not only does that give it time for the public to respond, now that we're recording meetings and everything, but I think, I think that's fair for everybody. I would be in favor of that change, but I definitely agree with Counselor Danforth that that wording needs to be changed.
Thank you, Councilor Brian. Councilor Palteer, you've been waving at me about half that time. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have so, maybe a proposed amendment to that wording. Given some real proper items could be discussed and not be on the agenda that would want to be included in the recommendation that you're about to make. I would suggest that we change that to read. Items, items may be added to an agenda after not being publicly posted, but must be disclosed in the recommendation. That way, we are talking about recommendation to the council, which is the final say. And then it could be publicly, you know, a discourse at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Palteer. And I am open to just having that taken out, by the way, and revising this at a future date. This can be revised at any time. Or amended at any time by the council, just pointing that out. Councilor Madore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Councilor Danforth. I don't see the necessity of having that in this. And I point to our own council meetings where we have adjustments to the agenda that happen at a moment's notice that aren't necessarily out there for the public to see before the meeting starts. And yet we discuss them, we debate them, and sometimes we even act on them. So I don't see where that necessarily, that line needs to be in there. I think for the sake of consistency and transparency and using our form of meeting as a template. I don't see why that, that line has to be in there. And I would, I would follow with Councilor Danforth and see that it needs, should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Madore. Any other council comment on that? Councilor Palteer?
Oh, not a comment. While we go comments are done, I was going to make a motion.
Maria, go ahead.
Well, comments being closed, then I'll make the motion to amend order twenty-six dash twenty-two to remove the line items may not be added to an agenda after being publicly posted.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Palteer, seconded by Councilor Danforth. Discussion of the motion. Seeing none out of the public? Susan DeSandro wrote, I can't thank you enough for all the great work these committees do and the time the counselors and others give to them, and the committee policy is icing on the cake for the open and clear way. You are all doing your work. Thank you, Susan, for your comments. Seeing any other public comment? Seeing none back to council, all those in favor of the motion, Councilor Palteer?
Yes, on the amendment.
Which was your motion? Yes. Councilor Braggan?
Hi.
Councilor Madore?
Hi.
Chair Gollyby, Councilor McKeown?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
Hi.
Councilor Prey?
Hi.
All right, the amendment passes seven zero. Any further discussion on the council on the amended order? Set of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Councilor Prey?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
Hi.
Councilor McKeown?
Hi.
Chair Gollyby, Councilor Madore?
Hi.
Councilor Braggan?
Hi.
Councilor Palteer? The amended order passes seven zero. Moving on to order number twenty-seven, twenty-two, Councilor Madore, if I could have you read that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number twenty-seven dash twenty-two, providing for full-time code enforcement slash janitor position. Whereas municipal building janitor and code enforcement officers position are budgeted as part-time positions, and whereas the code enforcement office position is vacant. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council approves transferring the municipal building janitor's payroll budget to Department E zero one one four, planning code development and creating one full-time position that will be responsible for code enforcement and municipal building janitor duties. No. Code enforcement, yeah. No, there will be no increase in the FY twenty-two budget due to the unused code enforcement payroll budget. However, the FY twenty-three budget is estimated to increase approximately twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, based on an average salary of thirty-five thousand and current benefit costs.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Madore, seconded by Councilor Braggan. Discussion of the council? Councilor Braggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back when we had originally talked about these positions, one of the big things that came out of those discussions was consolidating roles. And Mr. Manager, you hit that right on the head with this order. I mean, you know, when we stated that we wanted to consolidate roles and find multipurpose, you know, uses for, for these roles that were part-time. It's great how you came right back in, in this, this is what comes to fruition. It just shows the great work that you've been doing. I definitely agree with it. I mean, if they're both part-time and we can get both roles filled. Why not do it? I think this is great. And thank you for the work that you did on this.
Can I respond to that, please? Thank you, Counselor Braggan. I don't want to take full credit for it. That was an idea in partnership between myself and our, and our human resources director as well. You know, we looked at a variety of options there and really felt that we do have a great in-house candidate that is beyond capable of learning this and we, you know, I feel very strongly that this will be a successful placement. And expanding further on that, we do have an agreement with former code enforcement officer, Trina Ngotti, to, who has offered his, you know, to extend his help, you know, he's been helping me with some of those cases since my beginning in this role and having to temporarily wear that hat as well. He's offered to continue that to make sure that the new code enforcement officer is, is set up for success as well. So much appreciated nation to him as well.
Kudos to you both then. And thank you to the human resources for, for doing the great work and getting this together then. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brian and Mr. Manager. Any other council comment? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, Councilor Palteer?
Hi.
Councilor Braggan?
Hi.
Councilor Madore?
Hi.
Chair Gollyby, Councilor McKeown?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
Hi.
Councilor Prey?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. Councilor McKeown, if I could have you read order number twenty-eight, twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number twenty-eight dash twenty-two, providing for adoption of multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Whereas the multi-jurisdictional hazard plan for Penobscot County jurisdictions was approved by FEMA. And whereas each participating municipality is required to adopt the plan to reflect its jurisdiction. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council accepts the attached resolution adopting the multi-jurisdictional hazard plan for the town of Millenocket.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilor McKeown, seconded by Councilor Palteer. Discussion of the council? Councilor McKeown?
Was that a test on diction? Sorry about that.
Actually, and was glad for a second that I was chair, so I didn't have to read it. Any other council comment? Councilor Danforth?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. So we're signing off on the resolution. Where, where is the plan? Can we see the plan?
Why, of course. Of course. I would defer to Chief Malcolm to point out the location of that plan.
In the county.
Councilor Danforth, we don't actually have the plan. This is Penobscot County Emergency Management's Plan. All we are is saying that if we have mitigation, they would be our source of revenue. That's who we would go to. I can get you a copy of the plan, get it back. I can't actually give you one or another because I don't have one yet. We will once it gets signed and everything.
Thank you. I just was trying to understand the context of what we were signing here a little bit better. Thank you.
This, this is something that we have to do every so many years. And we need, we've been about a year getting this, this all developed. And like I say, it's really, it's really Penobscot County EMA that does it. We're just kind of the one of the towns that just made that. Because we want, if we have this problem, we want to be able to call Penobscot County EMA and say, we got a problem here, you know, and they step in and help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm. Councilor Prey?
Yeah, and the counties work with the state.
Yeah, and, and the counties work with the state, uh, emergency management people on, on doing all of this, which works then with FEMA at the national level.
Thank you, Councilor Prey, for that clarification. Any other comment? Out of the public? Seeing none, back to the councils in favor, Councilor Prey?
I.
Councilor Danforth?
I.
Councilor McEwan?
I.
Chair Goleby, by Councilor Mador? Councilor Bragdon?
Hi.
Councilor Peltier?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. And Councilor Danforth, if I could have you read order number thirty, twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number thirty dash twenty-two, providing for approval of donation. I'm not, I'm not, might not say it right. Poseidon? Poseidon, thank you. I would rather, I wish I could have read the other one. Poseidon, okay, S C B A. Air compressor in Bauer Field Station, Bauer Field Station. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the donation of the Poseidon, S C B A air compressor in Bauer Field Station to the town of Littleton as an effort from the town of Millinocket Fire Department Assistant in the protection of another community and in the safety of his residents and firefighters.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Mador. I actually intentionally did not have you read the previous one because I always give you the difficult ones to read, and here we are.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, since she moved the order, could she explain it to us?
I, I kindly yield to our chief Malcolm. He hasn't, there's a nice, um, letter behind the order.
Did you, did you want an explanation, Councilor Prey?
No, no.
I didn't think so, but I'd ask. Any other council comment? Seeing none out of the public? Yes, please?
I'm actually just gonna add into the discussion as a manager, please, but I wanted to uh, reassure, um, Councilor Danforth that we also struggled with this order internally as we pronounced it, "Huba." So it was, you know, you're just, you're just, uh,
Thank you. It's, we're family, right? We're family.
Um, also just noting the previous order that we had, um, from our clerk, we need to sign that, uh, agreement, just so everyone's aware. So if everyone can stop in at some point to the town office to sign it. Um, Susan De Alessandro, haven't you heard of the Poseidon Adventure? Apparently not.
He's too young for the film, which has been remade twice, by the way.
Thank you, Susan. Uh, seeing no other public comment, going back to the councils in favor, Councilor Peltier? Councilor Bragdon?
Hi.
Councilor Mador?
Hi.
Chair Goleby, by Councilor McEwan?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
I.
Councilor Prey?
I.
Order passes seven zero. And Councilor Prey, if I could have you read order number thirty-one, twenty-two, please?
Order number thirty-one dash twenty-two, providing for community initiative directed budget approval. Whereas a full-time community initiative directed position has been approved, and whereas there's no department budget for this position, it is ordered that eighty-five thousand is approved to establish the community initiative directed department budget to pay for salary benefits, which assume family medical insurance and other related department expenses. And it be further ordered that eighty-five thousand is transferred from the unassigned fund balance to the appropriate expense line to fund this new department.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Prey, second by Councilor Mador. I know there's been some suggested amendments, uh, but I accidentally got lost in my pile of paperwork on the manager's desk here, but is there any, um, comment from the council initially, though? I'll research for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Mador?
I would ask, since it's, uh, eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, in the budget line, I, again, I knew, I would like to ask what the base salary is for, I, I realize the eighty-five thousand is salary and benefits, but what is the base salary for the position?
The base salary range advertised for this position was between forty and fifty thousand dollars. That contract, uh, or offer has not been negotiated at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mador, Councilor Peltier?
Uh, I'm just, need some clarification why this is being set up as a department versus just a position?
Uh, that was how we understood, um, the direction.
Is there any, uh, relative to the charter, is there any particular action we have to take to set up a department?
Yes, there is.
Not the charter, but the code, correct? Uh, we could edit it to put it under the, um, office of the town manager or the, uh, economic development, uh, department?
I would suggest under the office of town manager.
I would support that as well. Any other comments from the council? Um, Councilor Prey, I think you're gonna reference the budget issue of the fiscal year.
Yes.
Um, I'll have the manager speak to that. He had a proposed amendment that he can speak to.
And this, I apologize for, um, my confusion here. Uh, as we were looking for this revised amendment as the original amendment was being read, was the adapted amendment read, or was it the original reading?
The original reading was read.
Okay, so the adapted order we had added, um, that it is further ordered that based on the position being filled March one, two thousand twenty-two, that thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars is transferred from the unassigned fund balance uh, to the appropriate expense lines to fund this new department, um, for the remainder of FY twenty-two.
And, uh, Councilor Prey, if you wanted to speak to that, though, of, uh, why we're looking at making that change through the fiscal year?
Yeah, there's, there's one-third of the fiscal year left, and, and the eighty-five thousand is intended to be for the full year. So with the remaining, uh, four months in the fiscal year, I thought we should, well, one-third of eighty-five is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I had recommended earlier that we, uh, uh, put in twenty-five, so we'd have a few extra thousand dollars in case there needed to be any type of equipment like a computer or whatnot to set up, um, an individual, uh, in that capacity. So I was gonna recommend twenty-five thousand. Um, you said thirty-five?
Um, yeah, and very honestly, Councilor Prey, um, we had done the more detailed, uh, budget breakdown for, for the full year, for the annual budget for that position. Um, and that was an oversight on my part here, um, not to include, uh, just the remainder of the fiscal year. Um, so when that was brought to our attention this afternoon, pressing up against meeting time, we did some quick math on that. Uh, and it, it may very well be that the appropriate spending for that, um, is based, is closer to your recommendation. Keeping in mind that there are some startup costs on top of salary and benefits associated with this. Um, and the way that the health insurance benefits, uh, work, um, the one of the month would, months would be, um, paid upfront ahead of time, like a prorated, um, arrangement, so that does increase the cost to a small amount. Uh, when you look at the, you know, the division of twelve months in a, in a year. Um, so again, yeah, um, it, very honestly, that was some quick math, um, later in the afternoon, um, after that, um, mention of the fiscal year was made, uh, so it very well may, may be closer to what you're suggesting, Councilor Prey.
Mr. Chairman?
Please?
I, I move that, um, we change the, uh, figure to eighty, uh, to, from eighty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Seeing no second?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Prey, second by Councilor Mador, discussion of the council?
Um, we think it would go from thirty-five to twenty-five.
I'll just point out, though, um,
Well, the order is, as I read it.
That's right.
Yes, correct.
I would point out that any remaining funds that are unspent will go back into the budget and the balance anyway. Um, it might be better to have a little bit more of a cushion based upon what, uh, the manager just referenced of potential startup costs and such. I, I'm not opposed to, to having a slightly higher amount just to cover any potential additional costs if it's not spent, as I said, or to go back. Councilor Mador, then Prey?
Uh, I would just ask that Councilor Prey, if, uh, he would be amicable to, uh, moving the number to thirty thousand. That would be halfway between the thirty-five. Uh, the manager was anticipating in the twenty-five that he just proposed, and thirty thousand as a, uh, uh, halfway point to get this underway, to be able to do this and get this position started. Thank you.
Councilor Prey?
Yeah, well, the, the position will be started anyway by the order, no matter which it is, and if there's a necessity for additional monies and a significant number of council meetings, we have orders that are brought forth by the treasurer of moving money around. So if that isn't sufficient money to make it through the rest of the year, uh, like I said, twenty-five thousand is going to be, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars over what is already there. What's a computer gonna cost? Uh, six, seven hundred bucks, if you get a high, a, a fairly good grade one, a thousand bucks. If you want something better, that still leaves another, um, you know, another fifteen hundred dollars for other additional costs. Um, I, I, I'm a little concerned in reference to this upfront money of hiring an employee, employee, uh, the insurances and those types of things all usually tied to the payroll system, payroll, and employees got, if we're gonna hire them on the first of March, they're not gonna get paid until a week later, uh, which is gonna go through. So that, that isn't all going to happen significantly to that amount. Uh, if you wanna make it th- thirty, I mean, we've been discussing on numerous items about how much money we're taking out of the, uh, unfunded balance and where we're going to be fiscally. This is a small issue, but thirty thousand here, thirty thousand there, five thousand here and stuff. It eventually adds up to a hundred thousand or more. Uh, if you wanna, if you wanna amend my amendment, uh, that's up to you.
Thank you, Councilor Prey. Um, you do bring up a valid point. We can add, uh, to the line item later. Councilor Mador?
Yeah, it, it just, it's just a matter of accounting right now, uh, is Councilor Prey and myself know, and, and other councils as well. Uh, the big thing is going to be once the hiring is done, and we have a fixed base salary that a budget, actually, budget line can be built around in the coming budget sessions. That's going to be the big indicator for what we need to go forward. For right now, thirty thousand dollars to go ahead and get the position started until such time as we can go through the budget process for next year. And factor in that salary and benefits then, I think would behoove us to go ahead and do it now.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. Councilor Bragdon?
Yeah, the, the only question I have is how it's still read. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor Prey. Um, it still currently reads community, community initiative director department. So do we need to amend that before we, we pass this, since that's obviously an issue with code?
You can have, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
You, you can have multiple amendments. You, you have to vote on each one of them, but this amendment deals with a dollar figure. Then, uh, Councilor Mador can, can, uh, change the name of the, of the position, uh, to it, and that would just, it'd be like an amendment A and amendment B. And then you'd read it as if those were included in the initial proposal that the chair would then put it up to vote, to be voted on.
May I suggest, um, just to not make my head explode, for this all being done in one fell swoop, if we could just withdraw a second and the motion?
Withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Anyone have any amendments they'd like to make? Councilor Prey?
I'll yield to Councilor Mador.
Councilor Mador?
Councilor Mador? So he doesn't have to amend my amendment?
Oh, my God.
And you can only amend it twice. You can't amend to the third.
All right, uh, first off, I, I would like to, uh, make a motion to amend the order thirty-one dash twenty-two, uh, in the line, uh, I would take out eighty-five thousand dollars and, uh, instead insert thirty thousand.
Twenty-seven, five?
Continue, Councilor Mador?
Uh, also, I would love to go ahead and, uh, amend the, uh, community admission, uh, initiative director, uh, under the department of the town manager.
I think it's administration.
It should be.
Department of Administration.
You're right. It should be Department of Administration. Yes.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Mador, second by Councilor Bragdon, discussion of the amendment by the council? Seeing none out of the public? Let me get the public, uh, chat back up. Yes. Uh, also seeing none, back to the council, all's in favor of the motion for the amendment, Councilor Prey?
Yes.
Hi.
Councilor Bragdon?
Hi.
Councilor Peltier?
Hi.
Councilor McEwan?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
I.
And Chair Goleby, I. Now back to the order itself. Are there any further comments on the amended order by the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the councils in favor of the amended order, Councilor Peltier?
Hi.
Councilor Bragdon?
Hi.
Councilor Mador?
Hi.
Chair Goleby, by Councilor McEwan?
Hi.
Councilor Danforth?
I.
Councilor Prey?
I.
Order passes seven zero. After that fun exercise, Councilor Peltier, can I have you read order number thirty-two, twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number thirty-two dash twenty, twenty-two, providing for authorization to pay insurance deductible. It is ordered the town manager is authorized to pay one thousand dollars as a deductible on a town insurance, uh, town's insurance if a claim is submitted. It is further ordered to exceed, to expand. It is further ordered to expand the one thousand out of number eleven, zero, one, dash, thirty-one, oh, eight, airport building maintenance, leaving a balance of one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents. Note, this is a reference to the current situation with frozen underground pipes at the airport. We are awaiting further information from the Millinocket Insurance Agency on details of this potential claim.
Second.
Councilor Peltier, motion by Councilor Peltier, second by Councilor Bragdon. Uh, this was a updated order, um, that ran out either yesterday or earlier today. There was an update to the order that you just read. Um, would the second and motion be withdrawn so that we can have an updated version be read, please?
I revoke.
I revoke my motion.
Thank you very much. Councilor Danforth, do you have that updated? Thank you.
I do.
If you can read that, please?
Yes. Order number thirty-two dash twenty-two, providing for authorization to pay insurance deductible. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council authorizes to expend one thousand dollars out of um, number eleven dash, no, eleven, oh, one, dash, three, one, zero, eight, airport building maintenance, leaving a balance of one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents as a deductible on the town's insurance if a claim is entered. It is further ordered that the town manager is authorized to file and execute all necessary documents related to this, to the insurance policy. Note, this is in reference to the current situation with frozen underground pipes at the airport. We are awaiting further information from Millinocket Insurance Agency on the details of this potential claim.
Every second.
By Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Bragdon again, discussion of the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the councils in favor, Councilor Prey? You're muted?
I thought I hollered loud enough, you could hear me even muted. I.
Councilor Danforth?
I.
Councilor McEwan?
Hi.
Chair Goleby, by Councilor Mador?
Hi.
Councilor Bragdon?
Hi.
Councilor Peltier?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. And with that, that moves us to reports and communications. And with that, that moves us to reports and communications. Warrant Committee for the March tenth, twenty twenty two council meeting will be Counsel Pray and myself. If you're good with that, Counsel Pray?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any chair committee reports? Counsel Braggan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to to like a little bit more about the events committee. I brought up the idea of creating a volunteer list and basically what it would be is it would be an application that would be posted on our website and possibly given over to the school for students to fill out that are looking to fill volunteer service hours. That could basically be one list that all the committees could use, or even the council, if we're looking at doing something in the future with volunteers. Which would be straight on our website. I've already got some of the programming done, so we'll auto fill into an Excel sheet once the application is filled out. It would include interests that the individual might have. If they're willing to get wet, you know, snow, all that related stuff. To make it a lot easier on the events committee and all the committees in general, when they need volunteers, we have a list of people's phone numbers, emails that would be easily accessible to anybody on the committees to to get to. I'm still working on it. It's going to be up at the next events committee. But I wanted to get some input from you guys to see exactly if if this is okay, if I'm even allowed to do this. But get some more direction on it. There's obviously been a lot of discussion in the past about how volunteers have been lacking, and I think this is a great way to one, get in connection with the high school students that are looking to fulfill their, you know, their service hours, and on top of that, find adults or even organizations in our community that are willing to continue volunteering as time moves forward. And obviously, this list can continue to be updated as it moves forward. You know, if somebody wants to opt out, you know, they simply send an email. I'm working all that in the background. But like I said, I was looking for some more direction.
Thank you, Counsel Braggan, for that initiative. Typically, there's not much discussion. The chair committee reports, it's just a report. You can certainly get feedback and continue those discussions in your committee. Bring that to the council for full discussion, either on the manager's report, to get a straw poll or as an order, if there needs to be an order that has to be passed for it. But certainly continue those discussions in your committee and bring that to the council in whatever form you think would be best. According to our new policies. Thank you, Counsel Braggan. Any other chair committee reports? Sustainability Committee is meeting next Monday at eleven AM. It'll be in the, or is it ten AM? Eleven. It's either ten or eleven. It's online.
Time zone on this one.
Time zone I got right this time. And it'll be held at the library and also on Zoom. And we'll be discussing a whole host of issues. Okay, well, it's it's on the town website. It's either ten or eleven. I think it's ten. So please be there at ten, otherwise wait for us for an hour. Any other chair committee reports? Ten AM. Seeing no other chair committee reports, we'll move into the two-minute public comment. Any member of the public have any comment? And yes, Benjamin Bar, we're looking at the chat all the time. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you. Ben Bar, one twenty seven Elm Street. Just a reminder that tomorrow night at six o'clock is the Robert Burns Night. At held at the Elks Club on Arustic Avenue. There will be performers Rick McGibben, Mark Miller, and Bernie Stockley on the bagpipes. Poetry and music features the Knights as we celebrate the birth of Robert Burns, the bard of Scotland. Where your tartan, your kilt, your plaid, whatever, or even just come on out however you are, and it's donations that go towards the friends of the Millinocket Library in support of the library.
Thank you very much, Ben. Any other public comment? Yes, Jeff.
Jeff Campbell, three Juniper Street Airport Manager. I assume there would be questions during the order for the airport about update on that situation. If I could speak to that for just a second, would that be possible?
Yes.
The, I would like to publicly thank the town manager for always being open and available and helping me through these issues. I've been down there and I've been in less than a good mood because of our situation, and he's been very helpful in 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 discussing these issues. And I appreciate that greatly. The situation with the water is an ongoing situation. I'm in discussions with the Public Works Director, who is our infrastructure maintenance department for doing this. And we're gonna work on that once we find out what the insurance company is gonna allow us to do moving forward. And in another piece of this infrastructure deal, the roof was damaged yesterday during the wind. I discovered the roof over the entryway peeled back, and Public Works is gonna try to address that as soon as they can. I know we have a storm coming tomorrow, so it'll probably be next week. So, and again, that's why I I gave a shout out on the school department infrastructure, being able to keep buildings and so forth in good shape, so that moving forward, we have something to work out of. We're trying to replace this building. This building isn't included in our normal AIP or CIP projects, airport improvement or capital improvement plans through the FAA, so we are on the hook for taking care of our terminal building. So just moving forward, I'd like, just like to know, like you to know where we're at with that. The water is a is a ongoing process. I got a portable toilet here to take care of that. I was able to secure a water cooler and some drinking water. And I have some disinfectant wipes and so forth, so that we can still operate. So again, I thank the manager for all he's doing in this process, and we'll hopefully have a resolution to this before spring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Even more speaks to the importance of looking at having a new building there. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I will.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Mador, second by Counsel McEwen. All those in favor, Counsel Palteer?
I.
Counsel Braggan. Counsel Mador.
I.
Chair Goli by Counsel McEwen.
I.
Counsel Danforth.
I.
Counsel Pray.
I.
We are now adjourned seven zero. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.